Yep. Good morning and welcome to the first city council briefing session of the new year. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Zepone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right, and special welcome to new council members Jonathan Bingle and Zach Zepone. We're so excited to have you and looking forward to a new year with all the characters on this call who often are here for briefing session. Mr. Ormsby, I think we're going to have a bit of a longer briefing session because we have to brief the advanced agenda and tonight's agenda, but would you like to start us off with the advanced agenda of January 10th?
I'd love to, Council President. Thank you, and welcome to the city council members and happy new year, and welcome to our two new council members as well. We all look forward to the opportunity of working with you, so thank you. Starting with next week's advanced agenda, on the consent agenda, we have a number of items. First is a proposed contract renewal for annual support and maintenance of the capital project management software, and Mike Sloan, our ITSD director, is here to present this item.
Thank you, Mr. Ormsby. Good afternoon, City Council. Welcome to 2022. First item up is, as Mike, Mr. Ormsby identified, was the renewal for PM Web. This is the project management tool, software that Integrated Capital and Engineering uses for project management. You may note that the increase this year is $103,114, up from last year's annual maintenance of $86,493.83. There's a small increase in general, but also we've added additional licenses. Kyle Tuig has worked with the county, and the county is now using this product as well, so there are these additional costs for licenses that Kyle has worked with the county to share this information in some of their joint projects. So it's something that Mr. Tuig has worked diligently to set up, so that's a really powerful tool for the two organizations to share. So we're asking your approval for this annual maintenance. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Not seeing any questions. Moving on then to a couple of contract renewals impacting the waste energy plant, and David Payne from the waste energy plant is here to brief these two items. David?
Good afternoon, Council President, council members. The first one up is a contract for activated carbon, which is used in our emissions control process. The contract's with Tavitt Norah of Marshall, Texas, with a not to exceed amount of $100,000, and it goes from 1st of January 2022 to December 31st, 2022. The second is a contract amendment to a value blanket with Siemens Dresser-Rand Company, also called Siemens, out of Seattle, Washington, for our turbine overhaul scheduled for the month of May. The original value blanket had a total of $1.8 million. Due to discovery work during the process of preparing for this, we've had to add an additional $500,000 to bring the total to $2.3 million. Any questions?
David, this is, Brian, and I just, the consent agenda items I saw for you were with Divco and Randway Safeway Services, and so they were different than the ones you just mentioned.
Are we doing the consent or the advance?
We're doing the advance, David. The consent part of advanced agenda for the 10th.
Oh, so I did the ones for the advanced agenda.
Okay.
My- For today, right. So we do the 10th first.
Sorry, my bad. All right. So, so backing up, the first is a renewal for Divco, who performs our maintenance on our HVA systems throughout the facility and in the administration building. This is a renewal, two of two, and it goes into effect from 1 March 2022 to February 28th, 2023, for the amount of $65,000, including taxes. The other is a contract with Rand Safeway Products out of LLC, out of Pasco, Washington. This is renewal two of four for cladding and insulation services throughout the boiler throughout the year, and this contract is not to exceed $100,000, including taxes. And I apologize, and I'll repeat myself when we get to the right one.
No worries.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, David. The next three items relate to work by our engineering department, and Dan Bowler from the engineering services division is here to present those items four, five, and six. Dan?
Good afternoon. Items four, five, and six are the proposed agreements for specialty on-call engineering consultants, in this case, electrical engineering and landscape architecture. There are two proposed agreements for the electrical engineering, one for Fed-funded projects and one for non-Fed-funded projects. These two agreements reflect the differing requirements of the federal funding agencies. Funding for these engineering consultants comes from individual contracts on which they are used mostly by engineering, but other departments as well.
So that'd be the two with David Evans and Associates if any council members have any questions relative to those contracts. And then, Dan, why don't you go ahead and cover the landscape architect one as well?
It's the same, same talking points. The landscape architecture, same thing, on-call. We don't have in-house specialty, or we don't have in-house expertise in that area. So, same thing, two-year agreement with a one-year optional renewal, and that one is non-Fed-funded. That's Bernardo Wills, by the way.
Any questions on these three proposed agreements? Okay, next we move to a proposed acceptance of grant funds for transit-oriented development implementation grant, and Maren Murphy is here to present this item.
Yeah, thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Maren Murphy, and I have my coworker Amanda Beck with me, and so we are, this one and the next items, I thought we could just combine both of them, though I'll be doing the first grant and Amanda will be doing the second grant, if that's okay?
You bet, please.
Okay, awesome, sounds good. So we do have a very brief presentation, just to kind of catch everyone up to speed, so I will work my way through this, and Amanda will just follow up right after myself. So, so happy new year, everyone, and I'm going to be speaking about the Transit-Oriented Development Implementation Grant that the city recently received. We also have the Housing Action Plan Implementation Grant that Amanda will be speaking on. We briefed both of these grants at the PIES Committee in September and November of last year, and this is, this process to accept the grant funds is really a normal, standard procedure needed to accept the funds and create a budget line item so that we can work them into our city's budget. So, nothing out of the ordinary, but just wanting to make sure that everyone is aware of this. And also just wanted to offer to the new council members, Councilmember Zepone and Councilmember Bingle, if you have any questions or would like to follow up with briefings in a separate meeting, we'd be happy to set that up as well. So, so the Transit-Oriented Development Implementation Grant, or what we call TOD for short, the city was awarded $250,000 through a competitive process from the Washington Department of Commerce, and this grant will help us facilitate transit-oriented development in areas with high-performance transit. And Transit-Oriented Development, or TOD as it's known for short, provides a mix of housing destinations and services near transit stations, supported by walking and biking, and the grant will fund the development of a plan and then study the environmental impacts of any potential development. And the timeline for this grant is through June 2023. We do have a study area that is connected with this grant, so it's focusing on the University District in the Logan neighborhood along SDA's city line, which is Spokane's first bus rapid transit route. So there's been a big investment in that, and this, these funds, this grant fund, will help us better support that by reviewing land use, zoning, utilities, and other topics to support the development along the city line, with a strong focus on housing, mixed-use commercial development, and then supporting walkability. So at this stage, we are working with Commerce to negotiate a contract, and the action that will be before you will be just the acceptance of the grant funds. And then, once we have the contract finalized, we will be working to hire consultants to help complete the planning effort. Again, as I said, it's a two-year process through 2023, and so we will, of course, be coming back to council with updates throughout as we pull together a community engagement plan and get started in the coming weeks and months. But this is, again, the focus of accepting the grant funds that will help us get started. So, that was my quick presentation. Any questions on that? If not, I will turn it over to my colleague, Amanda.
Maren?
Oh, yeah.
Mark, I have a question, but I don't know if you're the right one to ask this. So I guess I'm wondering, so $250,000 from Commerce for this, and then we're putting a million apparently for ARP dollars to cover housing along transportation quarters. So I guess I'm wondering, is there any overlap? Is there, are the two pieces working together? I'm just kind of curious how that million relates maybe to this 250.
Sure, and I might, I see Tyrell's on the line, too, so I might invite her to speak to that.
Yeah, this is Tyrell Black. I guess we haven't yet had the opportunity to discuss that, but we look forward to that. But right now, these standalone funds are just for this area.
Okay, but there hasn't been any discussion around how the million would be spent that we're putting into TOD planning?
Well, Louis and I have passed each other in the night with our vacation, so I'm not sure if-
Okay.
-there's been some discussion at the end of December, but not that I'm aware of yet.
All right, thanks, Tyrell.
Councilmember Cathcart, Brian Beggs here, just timing it. We haven't, so we've only sort of identified that as a big bucket, but we are looking forward to council administration conversation about how to allocate that million dollars. So there haven't been any conversations on the specifics of that yet, other than we've invited the planning department to share with us what they would propose as their priorities for that based on their on-the-ground knowledge, but we'll have more council discussion with them about that.
All right. Want to take it away, Amanda? Thanks, Maren. So, similar to the TOD grant, the city also is being awarded the Housing Action Plan and Implementation Grant, or what we're calling the HAPY grant. Next. So that is $100,000, and that is a part of a larger $5 million pot that Commerce came up with following the Housing Action Plan money that they give out to encourage planning for and construction of additional affordable and market-rate housing, and also to encourage counties and cities to look at a wider variety of housing types. Specifically, this grant is tied to strategies within adopted housing action plans. Next slide. So, from our approved housing action plan that was approved by council back in July, we picked three different strategies to focus on, figuring that they were both foundational and had the largest impact. They were also well in alignment with the mayor's proclamation and city council's implementation plan that was included in the adopted HAP. So, these strategies are compliant with the current comprehensive plan guidance, and then also, again, we felt that they would be easiest to take implementation from what the Housing Action Plan had recommended, and so staff has already started work on that. Luckily, the grant allows us to start work before grant acceptance and then backfill, so to speak. So we have obtained a consultant, and we're already starting to work on different benchmarking, best practices, research, starting to do some early initial public outreach. Next slide. So, now that we've gone through the contract with Commerce, we'll be finalizing grant acceptance. The TOD will begin their startup probably next month, or at least within this quarter. As I mentioned, the HAPY grant work has already begun, so we're hoping to take that initial pieces to plan commission within this quarter. And then, for both grants, all final grant deliverables will be due back to Commerce by June of 2023, and that's also when we'll have to finalize spending for all of the grant money. Does any council members have questions on the HAPY grant?
Okay. Not seeing any. Thank you, Maren and Amanda. Next, we move on to the reports of the mayor on pending, first of all, claims and payments for previous approved obligations, which are itemized in the advanced agenda. Then, next, it also includes the dollar amounts for park, that exclude parks and libraries. And then finally, we have city council meeting minutes for the meetings that will be approved next week, and those blanks will all be filled in prior to next week's meeting. Would move on next to the legislative agenda, and for appointments, for boards and commissions, there appear to be appointments, two appointments to the design review board and one appointment to the Human Rights Commission. And Council President, I don't know if at this meeting or prior to next week's meeting you had interviews scheduled with these two, these three new appointments.
Yes, we do have those interviews scheduled, but thanks.
Okay, but, but not tonight. I mean, I didn't want to cut off going forward today.
Correct. They're not, not for today.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you. I should have checked with you earlier. Then, moving on to the legislative agenda, first we have special budget ordinance relating to the programs that Maren and Amanda already talked about, and Paul and Josie is on the line, or here, to answer any questions that the council may have, but this relates to just the allocation or acceptance of those funds. So if any council member has questions, Paul would be happy to answer those. If I'm not seeing any questions, would move on then to emergency ordinances. And first is a proposed emergency ordinance dealing with participation in the rental assistance programs, and Council President Beggs is the sponsor and presenter on this item.
Yes, so this is an ordinance that we briefed at committee a few months ago, and it does two things. The first thing is it just codifies our rental assistance program and many of the state legislative requirements that were required to follow. The original proposed ordinance had several different protections for tenants. We circulated the language with landlord associations, both locally and statewide, and spoke with lots of landlords, and spoke with the tenants' union, and narrowed the scope of any tenant protections substantially. Essentially, the one local protection that goes beyond the state law is that if the only reason a tenant's being evicted is because they are behind on COVID-related rent, and they've applied for rental assistance, but the agency distributing the money just hasn't written the check to the landlord yet, then that would be deferred as far as eviction. If there is any other, if they owed money outside of the COVID pandemic, if they had any other things where they were creating a danger, not following the lease, causing damage, anything like that, there's no restrictions on the landlord's rights. So, that, that change basically came about from listening to lots of landlord feedback. We made probably a dozen language changes over the last couple of months, and that's essentially there, just one piece to not make someone homeless when the only holdup is not the fault of the tenant or the landlord, but just the agency that's trying to get the money out the door, which they are doing a much better job of, but they still haven't gotten all the requests out. Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, Council President, a question for you. So I guess what happens, you know, the one of the, the maybe more extreme examples that's been shared, but it did happen, was where, you know, an individual applied for the assistance dollars, and it took, you know, three, four months to get the money, and at that point, their tenants were now yet again in arrears by four months because of how long that took. So is there going to be a potential for the, this kind of revolving door where they're just constantly in arrears, and, and there's never going to be a way they can catch up?
Yeah, I don't think so. So this only would apply to rental arrears that occurred before August 1st of 2021. So it wouldn't apply-
Okay.
-beyond that. It's just the definition of COVID is, ends on July 31st.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Okay, not seeing any other questions. I think, Council President, you've got the next item as well, the proposed appointment of city council members to boards, committees, and commissions.
Yes, so we do this every year at the second council meeting of the year, which is next Monday, and we have gone through a process of people requesting positions, and I made some draft selections based on everything I heard from everybody, and trying to maintain as much diversity across several vectors, and then got feedback back from people of those. And so the attachment to this is the proposed roster of various boards, committees, and commissions, and work groups that council appoints, and they kind of speaks to themselves, and it includes, of course, our new council members. Councilmember Kinnear?
Thanks. I just wanted to make sure that the new folks are aware that they are assigned a board or commission, but there are additional meetings often attached to those boards or commissions. So there are subcommittees that are required to, for attendance and other duties, so it's not just going to a meeting and, you know, voting. There are, it goes on and on. So, this is kind of like the Hydra, you know, with many tentacles. So I just wanted you all to be aware that some committees are more time-intensive than others.
Yep. Yep, thanks for that reminder. A lot of, a lot of these assignments have other assignments within them, and also, you know, we did, we try to keep track of the number of assignments by council member, but really, as Councilmember Kinnear points out, for anyone who's watching, not all boards and commissions are created equal. Some rarely meet, and some meet all the time and require a lot of work. So, we did try to keep track of numbers of assignments, but it's not, it's not weighted, nor does it attempt to be. And, again, hopefully, one of the things that I was working on this time is trying to do succession planning and moving some people around to get cross-trained experience, especially by generation of council member. So, it's no perfect way to do it, but hopefully it will be, as Councilmember Kinnear told me, an entertaining year. Thanks.
Okay, and if, with no other questions, I guess finally, there's a proposed ordinance relating to establishing a new penalty for violations of the building code and amending the penalty schedule, and Chris Becker is hopefully here to present this item. I don't see Chris. This is on for proposed adoption at next week's meeting, so I'm assuming that councils have the opportunity to review this. Please feel free to contact either Chris or me with any questions, and I'll ask Chris to follow up with all of you during this next week as well. week as well. That council president is, and council members, is the proposed advanced agenda for next week, and it's recommended for approval.
Is there a motion to approve the advanced agenda?
It's been moved.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay? Any abstentions? All right, the advanced agenda is approved for next week. And since we're double dipping today, that will bring us to tonight's agenda. Mr. Ornsby.
Thank you, Council President and members of the council. On the consent agenda proposed for this evening are a number of items under reports, contracts, and claims. First of all, we have three proposed purchases for waterworks products and projects. And Lauren Searle from the Water Department is here to present those items. Lauren?
Good afternoon, council. Item number one is a spring bid purchase for waterwork parts. This is split between three separate companies, Corn Main, HD Fowler, and M&amp;L Supply. The total spend on a one-time purchase is $736,255.
Any questions on these three combined recommendations? And I guess Lauren and I missed this. You've got the next item as well for proposed purchase of magnet mounts.
Yes. Item number two is a value blanket with Metal Corp, Metal and Cable Corp, for magnet mounts. These are actually magnet mounts for holding our radio antennas for a smart meter system on top of water tanks. Allows us to mount to the tank without damaging the coating on the tank. This is a five-year value blanket with a not-to-exceed total spend of $200,000. Any questions?
Not seeing any. Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you.
The next two items calls for a repeat presence by David Payne from the Waste Energy Plant on a value blanket and a proposed amendment. David, I think you started, kind of gave us a teaser of these at the previous session. So carry on.
Again, afternoon, good afternoon, Council President, council members, and welcome to the new council members. I apologize for having to repeat myself. The first value blanket is with Cabot, Cabot Norbert Activated Carbon out of Marshall, Texas. This activated carbon is used in our emissions control systems as part of our Title V. This contract goes from January 1st, 2023 to December 31st, I'm sorry, January 1st, 2022 to December 31st, 2022, for an annual cost not to exceed $100,000 plus tax. The other is an amendment to our sole source contract with Dresser-Rand for the purchase of turbine generator overhaul parts for a turbine generator overhaul scheduled for May of 2022. This contract runs from March 1st, 2021 to February 28th, 2023. It's an additional $500,000 on top of the original 1.8 million to bring the total 2.3 million. This is to cover work that was undiscovered but found in the, since the contract was initially put in place. And it's not to exceed $500,000 plus tax additional. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next, we have a proposed value blanket for bulk, the purchase of bulk gas and diesel fuels at various city facilities. And Adam Russell is here to present this item.
Good afternoon, council members. Today, we're seeking approval on a five-year value blanket order with Coleman Oil for bulk gas and diesel fuels for various city-owned fueling sites. Estimated expenditure is $15 million, including tax. The City of Spokane was part of a joint fuel bid with Spokane County and Spokane Transit Authority. Bids were opened on 11/21 of 2021 to provide delivery of bulk gas and diesel fuels to city tanks at Fleet Services, Riverside Park Water Reclamation Facility, nine fire stations, one solid waste facility, wastewater management golf courses, and numerous facilities for other agencies. Prices bid represent the seller's margin over weekly published OPISS average for the, for each particular fuel. Can I answer any questions for you?
Adam, question for you. Just curious how the 15 million a year compares to what we've been paying in the past?
So we are currently, it was measured off of each type of fuel, and they came in, Coleman Oil came in under, under bid on, on, compared to the other, the other vendors. And it, it actually ended up being lower, lower than what we've been paying in the past. And I can get those numbers for you and send them over if you'd like.
That'd be great. Thanks.
Any other questions for Adam? Thank you, Adam. Next, would move on to a proposed low bid for the reservoir at the Spokane International Airport. And Dan Bowler from Engineering is still with us to present that item.
Item six is the proposed low bid contract for the SIA additional reservoir with Landmark Structures of Fort Worth, Texas for 13.2 million approximately, dollars to which we propose to set aside a 10% administrative reserve. This project constructs an additional water tower at the airport adjacent to the two existing water towers that you can see when you're out there. The low bid from Landmark was approximately 3.4 million or about 35% over the engineer's estimate, reflecting both the tough bidding climate that we're currently in, that you read about on the news. Second, number one. And number two, the fact that there's only about three tank erectors nationwide that can build this volume of tank. No other bids were received. This project is funded with a mix of state and federal low-interest loans and local funds.
Councilwoman Kinnear?
Thanks. Dan, I'm wondering if we're building this for redundancy or because we have additional need for water or a combination of both?
It's a combination of both.
Any other questions for Dan? Thank you, Dan. Next, we have the proposed contract extension for federal lobbying services. And Council President Beggs is, is the presenter for this item.
Yes. So Desamonten Associates has been working with us now for, I think, about two years. And they initially started out with a very discounted rate. And as they found their way into working with us, they are now working with us very regularly, both council and members of the administration, and particularly focused on transportation and infrastructure. And now, as you might imagine, is a particularly crucial time. So we proposed to extend their contract, and we've put them at a number that's commensurate with what the airport is paying and other cities and jurisdictions around the state for these type of federal lobbying services. And we, speaking as someone from the council legislative work group, couldn't be happier with their work and really excited to keep working with them.
Any questions or comments? Okay, the next item is a proposed contract with Spokane COPS to identify and remove certain snow and ice obstructions on sidewalks. And Cindy Ortiz is here to present this item.
Good evening, council members. This is a contract between City of Spokane and Spokane COPS. This is an effort to remove any sidewalk obstruction, especially along the designated school routes. And this contract is not to exceed $50,000 for the annual contract. Any questions? Yes?
Councilwoman Kinnear?
Councilmember Wilkerson and I were having a conversation with a staff member today, and she pointed out that there was a, an app developed to identify areas that needed work. And I'm wondering if that's part of this contract or can it be integrated into this contract?
It's not currently part of the contract, but I'm happy to look into integrating it and making sure that that's part of it. Who is it, if you can let me know who the contact is for that?
Yeah, it would be Shawna Harshman in her office.
Perfect. I will work with her on this.
Thank you.
And Council President here, I'm just going to add in, this is funding we approved a couple of years ago out of traffic calming funds. And we're just now getting around to putting it under an official contract. So they've already been doing this work and with great success. And they've engaged lots of community member neighbors to keep these designated schools safer out, safer. Thanks.
Councilwoman Bingo?
Yeah, I was just curious as to why Spokane COPS was chosen. I didn't know if there was maybe, you know, a different organization that this seemed to fall more in line with, or that we chose Spokane COPS because they're already doing similar work.
They were already doing, they have neighbors on patrol program or their NOPS program, where they were already kind of out doing it, I'm not going to say randomly, but just based on where they had volunteers. And so what this was is a more comprehensive application where we said, expand your program to the, each elementary school has two routes of a mile each that's their designated safe route. And so we focused that. One of the big problems we have been having in Spokane is people not shoveling the snow on their walks after snow events. And so they use a kind of a community engagement model of talking to the neighbors and helping them understand what the law and their duties are, and also if they need help, connecting them with nonprofits that do it for free or contractors that can do it. So we didn't put it out for bid on this time. But I know that coming up one of these years, soon, the entire COPS contract probably will come up for bid. Every few years it does if there is another organization. But basically, as you mentioned, they were already doing it on a small scale, but not necessarily applied to schools.
Councilwoman Stratten?
I would just add to that there were city departments when this was discussed. There were city departments that had reached out to COPS mainly because COPS shops are in every, every neighborhood. And they rely a lot. They have their volunteers that are all over those neighborhoods. And so it just seemed like a good fit that we had volunteers who were watching those crosswalks and sidewalks and all of that. So, but yeah, there was some discussion within city and city departments on that role.
The other thing I was going to point out is that the typical cost of this is under $25,000 a year, but we're making up two years' worth of work here on this first one. So it's, we get it, we're not paying them hourly to do it. We get a pretty good deal on the work that they do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other issues or questions? Not seeing any. Thank you, Cindy. Next, we have, excuse me, a proposed interlocal agreement with Spokane County for work crew services. And Thea Prince from the Grants and Contracts Office is here to brief this item.
Good afternoon, Council President and council members. What I have today is a five-year interlocal agreement between the city and the county for work crew services through the Detention Services and Geiger Correction Center. This is an interlocal that multiple departments use throughout the years for multiple labor items, I guess, needs. And so the pricing stayed the same as the last five years, which is very interesting. So I'm just asking for approval for this five-year interlocal. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Thea. And the next item is a proposed amendment to the Universal Transit Access Pass Agreement. And Megan St. Olson from the HR Department is here to present this item.
Good afternoon, council members. I'm here to brief the contract renewal. This is an annual contract that we've had since 2012 with STA on the Universal Transit Action Pass Program. This is a program that allows our employees to utilize their city ID cards as a transit pass around the city, primarily for their commutes to work. And this is part of our commute trip reduction program. The contract renewal for 2022 is not to exceed $31,000.
Any questions for Megan? Thank you, Megan. Now, we, next, we go to the reports of the mayor for pending claims and payments. So given the length of time since the last meeting, we've got two sets of claims and payments for parks and library and excluding parks and library. And then we also have two sets of claims relating to payroll. And then finally, there is one set of city council meeting minutes that is proposed for council approval. Next, in the legislative session, under boards and commission appointments, there are six different boards and commissions where there are proposed reappointments. And then on the legislative agenda, we have a proposed special budget ordinance. And the proposed special budget ordinance relates to the American Rescue Plan or ARP funding. And Matt Chase, or Matt Boston, excuse me, from the council budget officer is here to present this item.
Yes, thank you. So this is for our first tranche of American Rescue Plan dollars being spent. There has been a slight revision for this, but the original was for 14 million 45,000 of an increased appropriation that handles a handful of projects, of which being 6 million for affordable housing, 2 million for down payment assistance, 1 million for subarea planning to increase housing along transportation corridors, much like what was talked about earlier, 300,000 for eviction legal defense, 1 million for funding to childcare providers, 1 million for employment support in the arts, 1.5 million for play equipment, which has, the revision shows it as 1.12 million to account for the 380,000 that council had approved previously in 2020, 400,000 for the construction pre-apprenticeship educational program, 300K for equity navigator service that the city will utilize, 305,000 for internal financial personnel to be used for administration execution, excuse me, of the funding, 120,000 for a outside eligibility firm, 120,000 for community engagement and project coordinator personnel. Happy to take any questions.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, thanks, Mike. I, I guess I would make a motion that we defer consideration of this SBO for one week to give a little bit more time to both the new council members as well as myself. Frankly, I still have a lot of questions around a lot of these categories and kind of some of the specifics around them. There's not a lot of specifics included in our packet. So I still have a lot of questions related to that. And so I think setting aside some time at study session this week and then voting next week, to me, would be the kind of a more thoughtful way to do this. So I would make a motion that we defer for one week.
I'll second that first. Go ahead.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded?
Excuse me, who was the second?
Councilmember Wilkerson, did you second it? Was that?
I did.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any discussion about the motion to defer? Councilmember Wilkerson?
Thank you. And Councilmember Cathcart and I had a little discussion about this. So I guess I would really like Councilmember Cathcart to be specific that we have to defer all of these? Or are there some that he would actually like to be pulled out for further discussion that we could actually possibly add clarity to?
Sure. Well, I mean, I think the administrative positions are pretty self-explanatory, and that would be, I think, fairly easy to do. I, I can't speak for others, but I know I have a lot of questions related to, you know, even, even the first one on the list, which I generally support, 6 million for the affordable housing projects. Which projects, are there going to be a homeownership component involved? What's the RFP process going to be? Who's going to be involved in that? I just have so many questions around what the specifics are of each of these, what our next touches are in the process. You know, the eviction, for example, for me, I mean, I'm a strong believer that we need legal defense protections, financial support for both landlords and tenants. And landlords, I mean, the very smallest landlords that are really, really Landlords, I mean, the very smallest landlords, that are really, really struggling with the eviction issues that we've had for the last two years. And this isn't specific to that, so I'm guessing that's going to end up in the RFP. So I really have questions around who's going to put those RFP together? Will council have another touch on these? I have a lot of questions, and so I just think a one-week deferral with another touch at a study session would be really helpful.
So before Councilmember Stratton speaks, I just wanted to clarify what this special budget ordinance does. This does not get any money out the door. It doesn't have specifics in it yet. It just has categories based on the response we got from council when we presented this at study session. The process from here, after the money is generally allocated in these categories, is that the administration and council and community members would put together RFP groups for each of those categories to flesh out what they would be. And then it would come back to council for approval of that and approval of any contracts. So there's, the reason it's vague is that those haven't been done yet. But by putting the money aside, then that puts the onus on the administration to go ahead and convene those RFP groups that will include council member slash staff representation to answer exactly those kinds of questions. So just to be clear about what this is intended to do, it's not deciding who gets the money or how to categorize what affordable housing projects means. That would be the next step. This would just set that process going. Councilmember Stratton.
So for clarity, the RFPs would be, there would be a different committee for each item? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, yes, yep. It's kind of in our process that we've worked out with the administration, is that we would have a RFP committee for each of these categories and of administration, council, and community members, and they would come up with a proposal, which we would then circulate to council. So that there's a chance to both shape what the RFP looks like and give voice to either liking it or not liking it. So.
Okay.
Councilmember Stratton.
You know, we, some of us have been talking about this quite a bit today, and I've struggled a little bit with it because I think we do have new council members, and, you know, it takes time to catch up and to kind of dive in and get those questions answered. But for clarity, because I'm a big believer that my struggle is granting this is between granting this as a professional courtesy to new council members versus letting the community know we are getting, we're doing our best to get this money out, and that they're seeing some movement with this process. I just want clarification. If I understand this right, we're talking right now about the pots of money that we've divided up and looked at different areas that this, where this money can be spent, but the details are going to come later. So this is just to say, you know, our priority is affordable housing, and here's the pot of money that we're going to be dealing with in that. The next step then is that detail, correct? Where we get input from citizens, from council, from administration to really dig in and look at those applications to see, you know, what groups will be getting that money? Is that correct?
That is correct. Each of these proposals was inspired by ideas that were submitted by community members to the council ARP work group, and we brought these forward to council earlier at study sessions because we believe that they reflected broad consensus of the thought exchange, the in-person forums, and the emails that people really wanted to go in these directions. Also, these aren't, again, this is a little under 14 million dollars with the adjustment, this, you know, out of over 80 million dollars. So this isn't the last word on it, even under individual categories. There might be more for housing if council decides to do that. But it's what we called early outs, to just to try to get some money moving into the community on the highest priority areas. But yes, the specifics will come back to council before any money gets dispersed. And council will have involvement on what those specifics look like.
Perfect. Thanks.
I saw Councilmember Cathcart first, and then Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, and Matt has had his hand raised for a little bit, too, just to point out. But real quick, in terms of RFPs, so we would obviously approve a contract, but we're not necessarily approving an RFP as a council, correct? So the RFP could go out without necessarily council input?
Well, no, I mean, I think it's fine to bring it back to council for the RFP approval. So I'm committed to that, if that's what council wants.
Okay.
Yeah.
That'd be, that'd be very helpful.
Yep. I'm going to go Councilmember Bingle, and then Mr. Boston. Councilmember Bingle.
Thank you. So this is step one of the detailing process, or this is part of the details that we're going to be doing as we're going through the process. I think that that does matter. And for me, just being a new council member, there were processes and conversations that I was not privy to as I wasn't on the council yet. And I'm not saying that anything on this is necessarily wrong, but I do have questions that I would like to have answered, if possible, in the next week's time. I know that if we approve the monies, that they're not going out for several months anyway, is my understanding. And so for me to feel very comfortable in approving and getting these things out, I would just like to have some conversations with people that I wasn't privy to before my first day on the job, which is today. So that would be my request from the councils. That's why I would prefer a deferral. It just gives me some time to, you know, represent the Northeast as best as I can.
All right. Thank you. And council, or not council member, but Mr. Boston.
Yeah, I just wanted to just briefly touch on it, and I think a couple of people have mentioned this in the past during the study sessions that we've seen. So this is, this is very similar to what other municipalities our size are doing, and even bigger that are doing. They're essentially saying what Councilmember Stratton had said, they're developing buckets of spend, and they're saying, okay, these are initiatives that are important for, for the city or the, whatever the municipality to be, to tackle, you know, affordable housing being one. And that was one that was generally accepted between the administration and council, and so that's what those first tranche of buckets and how they were formed, not exactly forming an idea, just like I think Council President Banks had said, several applications or ideas came in saying, okay, different ideas within affordable housing, and that it came up with the overall umbrella of affordable housing and attacking that at 6 million dollars. So that's, that's where these different buckets came up with, just so that they're not, I just wanted to clarify that they're not specific ideas for anything or any certain project.
Councilmember Kinnear.
I just wanted to say that Councilmember Stratton's correct. So this is the first step. We've waited since, I think, April of 2021. People have been asking, when are you going to come out with something? The community's been waiting, the business community's been waiting. And I understand the, perhaps the angst of coming in as a new council member. I know that Councilmember Stratton and I were our first, our first council member, we had to vote out thick and safely. That was very controversial, and we just, we were thrown into the deep end, as it were. And I guess if you're going to use that rationale, a week would not be enough time for you to get caught up. If we look at some of the other things on our agenda tonight, the Yellowstone pipeline is hugely controversial, and we've waited for two years to pass something. That's controversial because we're looking at potentially a life-threatening situation. And there are some other things on here that we could also defer, like the 20 mile an hour speed limit around parks. We will defer that for a month because the staff is not ready to have that move forward. So at any point when you come on to council, you're going to be behind because you haven't been on council. So I would ask that we go forward with this and know that, as Councilmember said, Councilmember Stratton said, these are just the preliminary buckets. And Matt Boston said it best, other cities are doing this. And then the next step is to go through that RFP process and identify which projects the whole council wants. I'll also add that there were only three members of our council that were involved in this original process, and we were kept up to date on a semi-kind of regular basis, but we trusted that the three council members were making the right choices and decisions going forward so that we could get to this point. And after this, then we get to do what I consider the difficult work. And this is 14 million out of 80 million that we're going to have to spend. So we have a lot of work ahead of us, and I would ask that we go forward to show the community that we're serious about spursing this money and getting out to the people who need it the most.
All right. I saw Councilmembers Oppone first, and then I saw Councilmember Bingle. Councilmembers Oppone.
Yeah, thanks. I would say also as a new council member, I've been following along. This process has been out there for a long time, and it was something that we were frequently asked about over the last year of how we would prioritize these funds, knowing that it would come up in our votes. And it matches all the priorities that I talked about, and I think that the community wants action, and we need to show commitment to it, especially around housing, and this matches those priorities. And I think it's a great way to start off the year, is showing those commitments. And I had time since the election to meet with staff, meet with other council members and administration to get questions answered, so I feel comfortable moving forward with this.
Councilmember Bingle.
Yes, and I understand that coming into this, that I'm going to be new, and there's a lot of issues that I haven't had, you know, time to talk to everybody about these, and specifically 14 million dollars is a fair amount of money. And I understand, you know, being in a missionary's family, how important it is to get aid out, to get it, to get it out quickly. I also understand how important it is to get it out in a proper spot, whereas this isn't, not determining what specifically we're spending it on in those buckets. We are specifically defining buckets tonight, in that 1 million dollars is going to have to be spent on the arts based on what we're doing tonight. And so it is us allocating money to certain things. And so I think that's important. When it came to, you know, the ARP money, District One didn't have a representative in those three. I think it's important that District One gets the proper representation as we're determining what we do with this money. So I understand there's a lot of stuff that's been happening before me, but I do believe that it's important for my district for, you know, my questions to be answered.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you. So I have to do a little pushback on that. First of all, all these ideas came in through thought exchange, through community members, some were presented by council members. It has been open, able to ask about it. Some were brought to us from your district, from Councilmember Cathcart. That is certainly on the front burner in our next round of funding. So I believe there has been enough dialogue, or if people wanted to find out more. Again, this is just making a statement and allocating some funds in the areas that our community has said it needs it the most right now to go forward. And yes, our RFP will have to be put together and put out there, but until we take this first step, we can't take the next step. So I will be supporting going ahead and voting on this tonight.
Any other comments or questions on the motion to defer for one week? All right. Seeing none, I'll ask for a voice vote. All of those in favor of deferring for one week indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
And those opposed, nay?
Nay. Nay.
Nay. All right. It looks like the nays have it on that one, so we're not deferring it. But we did get, I believe, Mr. Boston, you circulated the substitute version with the numbers that took out the 380,000 that we already spent on item G, so it made it 13,665,000 overall, and 1,120,000 for item G on play equipment and bathroom upgrades in city parks. So everyone
That's correct.
Saw that. Is there a motion to substitute that version?
Some.
Second.
Okay. It's been motioned and seconded. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I guess my question is, so obviously there weren't plans in place as to how to spend the 1.5, but we're taking away 380, and so I'm wondering what parks, what's going to get left out? What's not going to get funded because we're going to take out this 380? And it kind of goes back to the questions over the whole thing. It's just when we don't have specifics, it's hard for me to know if I want to take out 400,000, or if I want to keep it in there, because maybe that's money that's going to go to Northeast Parks. And so I'm trying to better understand exactly how this money's going to be allocated before I vote on it. So right now, I'm against the motion to amend because I'm concerned that it could negatively impact the parks in my district.
Yeah, so what, when the ARP work group came up with the 1.5 million, and when we presented it to council at the study session for their discussion, we didn't realize that the 380,000 that had already been spent on park equipment had already been, special budget ordinance included it. So we thought we were including it when we did that, but it turns out we had already put that money aside. The, it doesn't say it right here on the thing, but the concept for the money in parks was to be prioritized into census tracts. Well, it says it right here, in the lowest income census tracts, which would be, I mean, District One would have more of those census tracts than any other district. So again, we're, it'll come up to parks to make a presentation to city council of, this is how we want to spend the money at these parks. And then we, as council, would discuss it and make a final approval, including amendments to how it is. So it's not, it's not the, it's not the specific parks, and it's not the amounts, and we've certainly, in terms of District One, we have put Mini Haha on our list for both this and our legislative agenda for getting funding. So it's no more than that.
Well, so for clarity then, when the 1.5 was identified, was that taking into account, then, the money that was spent on the aquatics?
It was, except that we didn't realize that
Okay.
The 1.5 had, or that 380 had already been transferred. We didn't, we didn't know that that had been transferred. So once we found out that it had actually been transferred, that's why we reduced it from him. And also, the other thing is, that doesn't mean that's the end of the money that's going to be spent in parks. It was just for this early out proposal.
Right. So really, it's a clerical correction, it's not a change in, okay.
Yeah.
That helps me a lot. Thank you.
Sure. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor of substituting the special budget ordinance as presented earlier today indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right. That's substituted. Back to you, Mr. Ormsby.
Thank you, Council President. So the next two items relate to a pilot program that the council implemented relating to, first of all, speed limits around certain parks. I believe there were eight. And then, secondly, the 30 mile, or the reduction of the 30 mile per hour speed limit on high drive. And Councilmember Kinnear has proposed two different resolutions dealing with those issues.
And after conferring with you, Mr. Ormsby, on behalf of Marlene Feist and your legal department, I'm recommending that we defer for a month Resolution 0001 because the legal department will need to define which parks need to have a traffic study and which are good to go, if that's the case. Does that make sense to everybody? So we did not do a traffic study. We were thinking, we were supposed to. We had a two-year pilot, and there was no study done at the end of that two-year pilot or during that pilot. And so here we are, and both streets and legal are asking for more time to determine if a traffic study or is a need, is needed around certain parks on that list. And Mr. Cathcart, you have a question?
Yeah, I guess I was wondering, is, so you mentioned that legal wants, or that staff wants to review the which parks, but why wants to review the which parks, but why wouldn't we just simply set it up to study all the parks that we're going to be changing or that we're going to permanently change the 20 mile an hour?
And they may do that. And Mr. Ormsby wasn't specific on that. And Mr. Ormsby, you may want to add to what I've just said.
I think there's, council members, there's some confusion about the definition of when a parking study is required and when one isn't. And it has to do with definition of playground or recreational facility. And some of the parks clearly fit that category or could, and others may not. And it depends on where the arterial runs. So for instance, on Manitow Park, the arterial area runs along the side of the Japanese Gardens. So query, does Japanese Gardens fit the definition of recreational or playground facility? You could argue that. If it did, then maybe you don't need to do a study. If it doesn't, then you do. And we haven't done, other than the high drive area, we have not done any traffic studies.
So a month will give us enough time to determine what you just discussed, Mr. Ormsby?
Well, I'm not sure because the issue just was brought to me today. I hope it is. I don't think we could sort that out in a week, but hopefully in a month we could. And I think that what may come out of that is an identification of a couple of parks where we maybe don't need to do a traffic study and could proceed, but yet, or certain streets around those parks don't need a traffic study and others may, but we could proceed with signage on some of them. But we need time to sort that out because we're talking about eight parks and as many as 24 streets that could be affected by signage.
I would also add that this may be an opportunity. This is the first step, but it may be an opportunity as we move forward to identify other parks in our various districts that we want 20 miles an hour. We all know which ones those are. So these eight are, were part of this pilot. I had hoped, I hoped, that there would have been data collected during that two-year period, but indeed, that did not happen. So here we are, asking for a one-month delay.
And I think there's, there's two issues. One, does a particular street face of a park need a traffic study? That's the first question. We can definitely get that answered in the next month. And then some of the parks' street faces may need a traffic study, and that probably will take longer. But we can pass something in a month, and any of the ones that are going to need longer, we'll just leave them off the list and then come back and amend the list later. So, but, so is that a motion to defer for one month?
That was, I made a motion to defer for one month.
All second.
Date here, okay. So to, let's put it February 7th. So a motion to defer to February 7th, and there was a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Okay, that is deferred until February 7th. All right. And you already mentioned the high drive one, which we don't need to do a traffic study, and plus, we're setting the speed limit at 30 miles per hour, which it formerly was before the two-year pilot.
And the traffic study was done.
Right.
And they learned that indeed, people are going well over, not just the 20 mile an hour pilot, but over 30 miles an hour. So the majority of people were actually going well over 30 miles an hour.
Yep.
So other stuff has to be done there to keep it safe, to be determined.
We're still having challenges with traffic enforcement, but we have asked the legislature to give us the ability to, um, speed cameras along parkland, which if they gave that to us, that could be enforced that way. But we'll see. All right, back to you, Mr. Ormsby, for Resolution Number Three.
Thank you. The next two resolutions relate to sending public hearings, and Eldon Brown is with us this afternoon to discuss those two proposed public hearings.
Good afternoon, council. First item is a vacation of various right of ways. It's out there in the vicinity of Esmeralda Golf Course. Let's see if I can pull up a map here. Got two of them here, so I got to get the second one up there. Okay, so basically where we're at is northeast part of town. Out there, everything is crosshatched in red of the proposed right of ways to be vacated. They go from Rich Avenue at the top to basically almost down to Garland. West of Freya Street is the east boundary. And the applicant wants to build a commerce park. And these actual right of ways were established back in, I think it was 1889 when it was planted. So they would like to vacate these right of ways using the non-user statute. And basically what the non-user statute says is if you had right of ways that were planted prior to 1904, and they were in the county at that time, and they were in the county for a period of five years prior to them being opened in there before they get annexed into a city, this non-user statute applies. So it looks like we actually had the town of Hilliard out there was incorporated, I think, in 1907. And since this was planted in 1889, it appears to meet all the criteria to be vacated under the non-user statute. And basically what the non-user statute means is we turn the right of way back over to the owners today without charging many fees for the right of way. That's the basis for that. So any of the conditions that we're really proposing in here is, is we used to have a transmission water main that went down La Crosse Avenue over to Rich. That has been relocated in here now to, basically goes up to Rockwell Avenue to the, excuse me, Rich Avenue. We've realigned this right of way where it no longer goes through La Crosse Avenue. So we are going to be retaining some easements as part of this actual release of our right of ways. But basically, I just want to highlight the fact that the applicants are trying to do it using the non-user statute, which would be a no-cost vacation. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions about it. No questions on this one, I'll move to the second one. The second one is an alley out here in just a, kind of a lower downtown area in the east part of town. It's out here at Second Avenue, basically between Pacific and Second, from Sherman Avenue on the west to Sheridan Avenue on the east. And it's an alley in here that the proponents out here are just having a lot of vandalism, graffiti, just all kinds of things going on in there. So they would like to vacate that alley in there. And it is an unimproved alley, but we have no city utilities in there. There are some fiber companies with some utility, or facilities in that alley. So we would recommend vacation to this one, subject to easements in there. And this would be at cost. It doesn't apply for any non-user statutes or anything. And so our anticipated, I think our calculated fee for this one is $43,200 would be the fee for vacation of this right of way. They would have to do some proper closure work at each end of it, where they actually turned the alley entrances into basically like driveways to show that they're now private property. But I would be happy to answer any questions about that one, too, if you have any. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Eldon. Next, we have a resolution declaring a sole source for condition assessment. And James Sakamoto from our water department is here to present the site.
Members of the council, good afternoon. The resolution accompanying contract are for naming Hydromax USA as the sole source provider. It's for the condition assessment of 2.2 miles of water transmission main, and they'll be using a PCAT, a patented technology. The do not exceed cost for the contract is $100,000. Are there any specific comments on, or questions on the resolution or the condition assessment or the contract?
I'll say any, thanks, James.
Thank you.
The next item is a proposed settlement agreement and general release of claims. And I'll present this from our office in Place de Sam. This relates to a water main break on Grand Boulevard that happened last spring. It involved a commercial building on the corner of 14th and Grand, and there was some damage done to records and to basement space in that facility. And the city's gone through a process with the property owner and the tenants, and everyone agreed ultimately that this amount would be a reasonable amount for reimbursement. And we had a third-party appraiser assist us in that determination. So it would be our recommendation that the council approve this settlement agreement so that we can proceed to resolve the claim. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Move on next to the proposed franchise agreement with the Yellowstone Pipeline, with which Councilwoman Kinnear had referenced earlier in the discussion. And Tim Zamlin from our office has been working on this for a number of years, and there's been some council discussion involved as well. So Tim, I'll turn it over to you. The council, and actually for the benefit of the two members, the council has had this on and off the agenda for three or four times prior to this meeting. But I'll turn it over to Tim to discuss where we are now and the proposed recommendation to approve this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Ormsby. Good afternoon, council. This Yellowstone franchise is replacing one that expired in 2005. It is for a 25-year term. And in this franchise agreement, the city will receive $25,000 from Yellowstone Pipeline on an annual basis. The current annual franchise amount is $200,000. So you can see it's a substantial increase. And another important component of the franchise agreement, after five years have passed after adoption of the franchise, there will be an increase in the franchise fee every year based on the CPI or 1.5%, whichever is greater. So there's definitely money that will be coming into the city that is substantial increase. Insurance coverage is $100 million that we will be getting once this franchise is approved. We currently have a $10,000 bond. So basically, we're getting a substantial amount of coverage. So if we get that in place after five years, we've written into the franchise that the parties can discuss the insurance coverage requirement to see if there's any merit to change them, which is very unique. This is to pipeline franchise agreements. We worked really hard to get this into the franchise before you. So that is a benefit. I mean, if we can actually justify that the insurance amount needs to be increased, it can. Also, there's a side letter in this franchise agreement, which, once accepted, Yellowstone Pipeline has agreed to pay $75,000 for a vulnerability assessment to the water department, which they're going to be doing anyway. So this is a good offset for the water department to see what, to help with that assessment amount. This franchise has also had an independent legal review by Tupper McInwells out of Seattle. They found, this is a quote, "Our assessment of the current draft of the franchise is carefully structured to protect the city's interests despite the constraints on city regulation of pipeline safety resulting from federal preemption." Also, this franchise has gone through an independent industry standard audit, which looked at Yellowstone Pipeline's operation, of safety operation of the pipeline. And it was done by Southwest Research Institute. SRI audited, determined YPL is in compliance with industry standards. Another important thing that is critical in getting this franchise passed is the replacement of the pipe for Yellowstone Pipeline that goes under the river. They are looking to get this pipe replaced as soon as the franchise is adopted and the weather conditions permit. It'd probably be in the late spring, early summer. One last thing I do before closing and taking any questions is, in December, Yellowstone Pipeline sent the city a check for the 2001 franchise fees in the amount of 200 and, or 25,000, not 250,000, but as a good faith effort to show their wanting to get this taken care of. So we did get our franchise fees for 2021, which they did not have to do. With that, I'll open it up to any questions that may be out there. Yes, Lori?
Tim, I just want to thank you for all the hard work you've done on this. And I know that I personally have created a lot of angst for you, and I apologize.
Oh, it's part of the job.
I know. This is particularly stressful because we know that we can take all the precautions and we can still have a pipeline rupture, and it would decimate our drinking water, our aquifer in our river. And what we have now is really nothing. We don't have enough insurance. We don't have enough guarantee of anything. So I feel kind of like I'm between the proverbial rock and a hard place. I want to do the right thing. I know what can happen regardless of all the precautions. I want to make sure our city is protected as much as possible. I know that, I've heard the stories from council president about the Bellingham pipeline accident and the children who were killed. And that kind of weighs in the back of my head as well. That said, I support your efforts and I support this. I am hoping that we can continue the conversation to further guarantee the safety for our community. This pipeline goes under the river, it would contaminate a well if anything were to happen in District One. It would contaminate the river, and we really don't know the extent of damage. So I'm hopeful that we can continue the conversation if we pass this and then move on to the next step. But at least we'll have the peace of mind that we're covered for right now. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Kathcart?
Uh, Councilmember Kinnear, the, I can't really hear you.
Councilmember Kathcart, we can't hear you, really. You're kind of breaking up.
He says move on. He's fine.
Okay, great. He can catch up at the meeting when we talk about it. Councilmember Stratton?
Okay, Tim, I'm going to ask a question I don't even know if I can ask, but I've been dying to throw this out there. What happens if everybody on council says no? I mean, what, do we just walk away from something like this? Or these are agreements and infrastructure's in place? What happens if council just says, no, we don't, we don't want to do this? I mean, do we have to move? this? I mean, do, do we have to move forward with the contract? We can, do we have to continue this process? Or can it be over?
The, the answer is, um, and it also, um, addresses Councilmember Keneer's, um, response, is that one of the important things that came out of this is building the relationships, not only between the legal department, but the water department and YPL, and their res, um, their response time with emergency personnel, with like the, the fire department here in town. We've gone, we've really built some good, um, relationships and better communication that we're kind of lacking in the past, based on, um, getting people connected with the right individual. Um, I believe it is important to have, um, something in place such as this franchise because it's a building block. And if you look at, um, Yellowstone Pipeline, they have done, um, what they're supposed to do under their, the guidelines. Phillips 66, who is the operator of it, um, has got national award last year for their, um, safety compliance and no incidents. Um, one of the other things that is out there is that the city of the Spokane Valley is looking at, um, adopting this and, uh, a similar ordinance with, um, franchise ordinance with the same insurance requirements. And to be honest, there's more of the pipeline in the city of the valley, in the county, than within the city limits. Our exposure is not great. There's not that much, um, pipe in the public right-of-way. A lot of it is on private property. Um, but this is a, a great starting point, and it does provide us coverage more than what we have. And I think we use the relationships that we've built to en, enhance, um, the, the document down the road. Like I said, this has a, a unique, um, provision saying after five years of adoption, if we can really demonstrate that the insurance needs to be increased, the parties can come and discuss, discuss that. And if we can prove that it needs to be increased, um, just the work, relationship that we've developed, I believe we'd, we'd get some movement.
Thank you.
And I think, I think Councilwoman Stratton, I would add to that, that, uh, so the, the question really is if the council doesn't adopt the ordinance approving the franchise agreement, what happens to the right, to the, to the line that lies in our right-of-way? And that's really a good question. I mean, we haven't had a franchise agreement in place now for several years. And I think under federal law, it's, um, it's highly unlikely that they would have to move their line because we don't, because we don't grant them a franchise. Yeah.
Yeah, that's always been one of my questions when these issues come up. I, I wonder, what if we just stop and walk away from it and say no? But this has been explained well. And I, I echo Councilmember Keneer that at least we have some safety, uh, measures in place, and we're starting to build those relationships to, um, make it safer and, and make people work better together. So, but I was just curious because I don't know what you do. Because I don't think they have to leave. So, yeah. Okay.
It is highly regulated by the federal and state.
Right. You did a good job with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments for Tim? And I guess I would ask, uh, Council President, council members, would you like Tim to be available for the meeting this evening?
I don't think so. Please.
Okay.
Somebody should have dinner with their family.
Yeah. It, it seems unfair that you're not in that somebody definition, though. Okay. So, um, Council President, that, uh, concludes the presentation of the, uh, agenda for this evening's meeting.
With, with one exception, and that is there is a first reading ordinance, but it's the same building construction.
That's right. I'm sorry.
That we already discussed in the advanced agenda. So I don't think we need to discuss any further unless Chris Becker has made an appearance, and I don't see her. So, yep. With that.
And I will follow up, I will follow up with her and make sure that she follows up with the council.
Is there a motion to approve today's city council agenda?
No moves.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Any abstentions? Okay. Today's, uh, agenda is approved as amended. And then that will bring us to the reading of the consent agenda for passage.
Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, purchases of miscellaneous waterworks products in support of the 2022 service season from A Corin Maine, Spokane Valley, Washington for Item Three, restrained glands. Item Six, copper pipe. Item Eight, ductile iron pipe. And Item Eleven, hydrant parts. $593,688.56 including tax. BHD Fowler Company, Spokane Valley, Washington for Item One, couplings. Item Two, repair clamps. Item Four, tapping sleeves. Item Five, ductile iron fittings. Item Nine, gaskets. Item Twelve, air valves. And Item Thirteen, check valves. $139,128.18 including tax. C M and L Supply Company, Spokane, Washington for Item Seven, HDPE pipe. And Item Ten, all thread. $3,438.46 including tax. Total purchase value across all suppliers, $736,255.19 including tax. Item Two, Value Blanket with Metal and Cable Corporation Incorporated, Twinsburg, Ohio for the purchase of Magnum Mount, MA, 30 dash two magnet mounts on an as-needed basis, $200,000. Number Three, Value Blanket with Cabot-Norrett, Activated Carbon, Marshall, Texas for the purchase of activated carbon for the waste energy facility from January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2022. Annual cost not to exceed $100,000 including tax. Number Four, Amendment to the Sole Source Value Blanket with Dresser-Rand Company, Seattle, Washington for the purchase of turbine generator overhaul parts for March 1, 2021 through February 28, 2023. Additional mount not to exceed $500,000 plus tax. Number Five, Five-Year Value Blanket Order with Coleman Oil for bulk gas and diesel fuels for various city-owned fueling sites. Estimated annual cost, $15 million including tax. Item Number Six, Low Bait of Landmark Structures, One LP, Fort Worth, Texas for the SIA additional reservoir. $13,270,000. An administrative reserve of $1,327,000, which is 10% of the contract price, will be set aside. West Hills Neighborhood. Number Seven, Contract Extension Number Two of Four with Desammon Consulting Group, Seattle, Washington for federal lobbying services, $80,000. Number Eight, Contract with Spokane Cops to help identify and remove both permanent and temporary snow and ice obstructions on sidewalks included on designated school access routes. $50,000. Number Nine, Five-Year In a Local Agreement with Spokane County for Detention Services, Giger Work Crew Services. Item Number Ten, Fourth Amendment to the City of Spokane Universal Transit Access Pass Agreement, $31,426. Item Number Eleven, Report of the Mayor of Penning A, Claims and Payments, Previously Approved Obligations, Including Those of Parks and Library Through December 10, 2021. Total, $11,554,151.61 with Parks and Library. Claims approved by the respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library, total $11,31,647.26. B, Claims and Payments Previously Approved Obligations, Including Those of Parks and Library Through December 17, 2021. Total, $13,206,457.43 with Parks and Library. Claims approved by the respective boards. Warrants excluding Parks and Library, total $11,911,710.45. C, Payroll Claims Previously Approved Obligations Through December 11, 2021, $7,274,880.5. D, Payroll Claims Previously Approved Obligations Through December 25, 2021, $7,868,273.85. Number Twelve, City Council Meeting Minutes For December 13, 2021.
All those in favor of approving tonight's consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Any abstentions? All right. The consent agenda is approved. And this was, again, a very long briefing session because we have two meetings, but next week's briefing session will be miniscule because we have a holiday the week after. So, uh, just remember that when you're, uh, trying to get a little bit of refreshment before the meeting. We'll see you back at six. We're adjourned for now.